Now we're starting the introduction, we have one minute or two.
One is fine.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the American Fork Veterans Hall. This is the home of the American Legion Forty-Nine and Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Forty-Nine Eighteen. And over here in the middle, these are all the World War I veterans from this area. And the ones with the yellow around them, the yellow sores, those were the men who were killed in combat. And on either side are the World War II veterans. And the ones with the red around them, those men were killed in combat. And they have a few Vietnam and Korea guys. After World War II, they kind of were just kind to their fellow veterans in case. But we're going to be changing that soon. Now, to get back to why you're here. This is Commissioner Powers, Millie Powers Gardner, who I like to call the most intelligent. And her husband calls her the most beautiful woman in Utah County.
So I hope I'm the prettiest, I hope I'm the prettiest commissioner we have. Being the only female commissioner, I hope I'm the prettiest. I mean, the other men might be pretty too, but I would, I think they would probably prefer to be called handsome.
Yeah. Well, Tobin calls you the most beautiful woman in Utah County.
He is married to me.
So she's going to be our moderator. And we have two, let's see, there is other candidate here. Okay, we have two candidates for the Alpine School District Board Number Three. Next week, we're going to have Number Five. And it's kind of ironic because the moderator of the fifth is in the third. And the moderator of the third is in the fifth. So we're going to start with.
Makes moderators unbiased.
Yes, yes. So we're going to start with a one-minute introduction. Well, first, we're going to do the five introductions and then get ready to debate. And we're going to have a Vietnam veteran lead us into place.
Thank you for standing. Make sure I get this right.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you guys passed, you got it.
Like Craig said, thank you for coming. Can you guys hear us in the back? I'm not sure how loud this is back there. Is it easier if I just do it without the mic? I think it's just easier if I do it without the mic. If your voices start to stress, we can turn it on, but if you guys can project, we'd like you to be better. As Craig said, my name's Millie Powers Gardner. I'm a county commissioner. I do not live in this district, so as a moderator, then I don't have a dog in the fight here. I have a stack of questions that folks have passed forward. There's not going to be time to get to all those questions, so we'll try. And I'm also going to add a few more questions in. I am an engineer by trade, and I tend to be kind of an administration nerd. So I'm going to mix in a few questions that are a little less spicy, but really critical to the function of the job. So I'll mix in some budget and administrative questions with all of your political questions. I think every one of the questions I saw had a little bit of a political spice to it. So we'll mix in some administrative questions as well. And we're going to start with each of the candidates. We'll give you a one-minute introduction of themselves. And then what we'll do to start is we'll do one-minute question and answer until the end. Then we'll probably do a little more rapid fire. We'll do some thirty-second or maybe even like ten-second answers. And then we'll end, we'll give you a two-minute statement at the end. Our timekeepers are here on the front row. We've got, you'll flash red when you're done. Do we have?
We're going to go like this, you have twenty seconds left. Is that okay?
Yeah. So they'll flash you for twenty seconds and then.
Red will be your time's up.
Red will be your time's up. Any questions?
If you go over, she'll let you know.
Okay. Well, let's get started. We'll just start ladies first right here. And start with your one-minute statement.
Go ahead. All right, hi, everybody. My name's Stacy Beaton. I am currently serving as the ASD rep over seat three. I have been in public for the last twenty-seven years in a variety of capacities. I'm a teacher, I've been a coach, I've been a volunteer, I've been a substitute. And so I have very much enjoyed the work that I do in this area and the people that I get to represent. It's a fascinating job, and I'm excited for the opportunity to get to do this again.
Hi, I'm Brian Bird. I moved to the Lehigh area. Our family moved back to Utah during COVID. We lived in Ann Arbor, Michigan. In 2009, we left Utah to go to Ann Arbor, Michigan, so I could attend law school. We did law school there. The plan was to hit law school for a couple of years and then come on back. But our family and kids loved the schools there, loved the area, the community, so we ended up staying eleven years. And anyway, came back during COVID, relocated. Before we left, we lived in Provo, Utah. And before Provo, we lived in Orem. And before Orem, we lived in St. George. Growing up, I lived in Las Vegas, Nevada, just to kind of give you a little bit of background. But I graduated from construction management at Brigham and Wild University. And of course, have a law degree. And have a wife, five children, and super excited to be here with you guys tonight.
So the first question we have is, what do you feel the proper role of the school board is? Well, actually, why don't you go first on this one? What do you feel the proper role of the school board is? And then so we'll switch.
Do you want us to keep standing up or just sit down?
It's up to you.
Do you guys have a preference? Stand up? All right, so to me, of course, Stacy has me beat here because she's been on the school board. She has more information there. But the way I view the school board is, is we're advisory to the superintendent. I don't believe the school board should get into the minutia, the day-to-day, micromanaging, what, say, a principal's doing or a teacher's doing. I think the school board is like an advisory board to a business. And our job should be just to make sure they stay on course and to give resource information or background information for the things that the superintendent or his staff would like us to participate in.
So I believe that the school board, we set the policy and we set the direction. So we have two big charges with what we do. And the first is to hire the superintendent and VA. And then the second one is to set the budget. So it's the board that comes together, decides on the direction, gives staff the direction to go. And then we also set the policy. So whether that means creating new policy or amending retiring existing policies that maybe are out of date or they don't fit with current state code. So that is kind of what we do.
The next question is, do you support splitting the district? And if so, which option?
So I do support splitting the district right now. I've been on the finance committee for, this is now my fourth year on finance. And back in two-twenty, which preceded me, the community reached out to the board and said, hey, it's uncertain economic times, would you please postpone the bond? The board said yes. Then we ran a bond campaign in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, that failed. And so we were already behind, and then a little more. And so right now, we just have so many needs across the district. And we're not able to really meet them to the best of what everybody needs. And so I believe that if we're able to split into a better configuration, then one, hoping that patrons are maybe more inclined to support capital projects if it's in the geographic area closer to them. And also that we will just be able to be a little closer to our people. We represent very large numbers right now, and I think it will be a good thing for us moving forward.
Well, fortunately, I'm told that the current board is the one that will be voting on whether there's a split or not. Personally, as a, you know, a member of the public and have a kid still in high school at Sky Ridge, I think I would like to listen and learn a little bit more because I'm not sure really what the constituents or the public, you know, view it to be. I know that there's a poll that's going to be coming out soon. So I'd be curious to kind of hear what the constituents say. Instead of me just, you know, giving you an answer that I really am not as familiar with, probably as Stacy is with the current situation. But I do believe Alpine's doing a great job. If you look at their stats, they look like they're doing well in both assessments and with fiscally. So I think Alpine's in a great place. I do believe that constituents need a voice, and maybe it's adding two more board members to help, you know, with that situation.
Am I allowed to clarify something?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, okay, I just wanted to clarify quickly. It's not the board that will be voting on it. The board has the opportunity to vote whether or not to place it on the ballot. But it's ultimately the voters in Alpine that will determine if we reconfigure or not.
We'll go to another spicy question. It's likely that after the 2024 elections, the first lawsuit will be filed to the state legislation to ban biological boys or transgender males to females that want to participate in girls' sports. Which side of that issue will you be aligned with?
Right now, I'm on the side of the issue that gives kids opportunities and keeps them safe and supported in school. So I think when the bill came down, we knew ahead of time that there were going to be some lawsuits coming up. And so we will handle those as they each come.
Is that yes or no?
I hate contention. You know, I'm a believer that boy sport should be boy sports and girl's sport should be girl's sports. I love all kids. And, you know, however they identify, that's a tough question for me. I'm not a, I'm not very well-versed in how or why people do certain things, make choices. But I want you to know that as far as a board member, I would support and love every kid, no matter how they choose to view themselves. But at the same time, I think it's unfair for a boy to participate in a woman's sport.
What are your top three issues?
Yeah, me, you're first. Definitely growth, I think, is a big one, as Stacy said. And you guys, or as Stacy and the board have been dealing with, the growth, I think growth is a big issue. I don't know what a two and three would be because I think growth encompasses fiscal responsibilities as far as, you know, the need for more schools out west, the maintenance of the current buildings that we have. So I think growth has a couple of components that would make up my three. You know, whether it's raising money.
So I think my first is just making sure that everybody has what they need. We have some extraordinarily high class sizes in the West. And also based on some other variables, for instance, at Sky Ridge, there's classes that are offered that are not offered at Lehigh, and people can't always cross over. You can open enrollment to another school to take classes, but you can't always get there. And so I really would like to focus more on putting our resources in the areas that they need to be. Right now, all students do not have the same opportunities, and that's not how it should be in public ed. So focusing on getting the teachers that we need, and then also the supports. So things we hear time and time again from teachers are that the behavioral problems have just kind of been exacerbated since COVID. And so we've got counselors and psychologists and social workers, and it's just not quite enough. And then my last priority is just recruiting and retaining quality teachers.
So I'll go to a boring administrative question. I think both of your answers that you just gave included growth and buildings, maintenance, possibly new schools. What is your philosophy with capital planning? And how do you propose to budget for capital planning moving forward?
So one of the things with capital planning is we're looking at things in our immediate future, but then we're also looking ten, fifteen, twenty years out. One of the things that we had started to explore around the time, the last one in the past, was is there a way that we can adjust our increments so that we are not pursuing a general obligation bond? So we're already kind of working in that direction. But I also think it's a balance between knowing which areas, which schools need to be renovated with their seismic concerns, areas that we need to have growth. And so I really think, just based on the climate and the feedback that I'm getting from patrons so far, we need to find an alternative to general obligation bonds to still be able to meet the needs of the students.
Do you have any ideas on what that alternative would be?
Oh, yeah. So a couple of things. If we do go towards increments, then that's something that we just have each year ongoing, right? Once we get to a certain increment rate, we get that each coming year. And so I think we can set aside part of that. And then we've also kind of moved towards putting things in our budget so that we are planning ahead. So right now, our West Transportation Center can't do all of the repairs and maintenance that we need to do on the buses. So we're having time and money getting buses all the way to the east side. So just starting to set aside a little money each year to be able to meet some of those needs so that when they do come up, that we are prepared.
I really don't have an answer for it. I'm new, so I'll have to defer to the others.
Okay. A growing number of parents are choosing non-traditional methods of educating their children, including charter school, hybrid, and homeschool. HB 215 from 2023 will push this further. What role should ASD serve in supporting these families?
Bill's new to me. Does this deal with vouchers? Is that kind of voucher-related?
Yeah.
So I'm a supporter of choice. So I think parents should be able to choose which school that their kids go to. As far as on the public school side, I think the disadvantage for a public school is that public school teachers have assessments that they report back to the state, whereas charters don't have the same assessments. So I think it'd be nice if, both on the private charters and the public schools, that they could both be assessed the same way, just so we make sure that, you know, what are the graduation rates? What are the, how are the scores? But I do believe that, you know, if a parent wants to take their kid to a certain location, they should help to do that.
So I think it's an exciting time to be in education, right? The choices available to parents for their students, we have more than we have ever seen before. So I know we have some families that do hybrids, so they might do homeschool for part of their day, and then they come to their local neighborhood school. Some of them are in a charter school, or they're working in a homeschool co-op. And so I think we can just, the best thing we can do is continue on the way we're going. So when parents come in and say, here are my child's needs, here's what they'd like to pursue, what do you have that fits this? And, you know, counselors and admin can sit down with them and go through. Sometimes there are other physical or mental health needs that we need to take into consideration. And so our role is to make sure that any child that comes through our doors is going to get the best education they can, and we're going to meet their needs. And so it's just an exciting time to have a lot of choices.
We'll go for another spicy one. Okay. If I can't read your handwriting, there you go. Okay, shout it out for me, I'm going to try. "In June 2019, the USBE issued an LEA model policy. The model policy states, 'A staff member shall not engage in any conduct toward or sexual relations with a student, including viewing with a student or allowing a student to view pornography or any other sexually explicit or inappropriate images or content, whether video, audio, print, text, or other format.'" So this is kind of a two-part question. So we'll start with Brian. What will you do to ensure LEAs are familiar with and follow this policy?
So what's an LEA, first of all? I don't even know what that term is.
So like Alpine is LEA, or it could be individual school.
Yeah, so it's like a local education.
And it's a law.
So it's, yes.
Yes.
So what would you do? No, what would you do to ensure that schools and the district are familiar with and follow the policy?
So if it's a law, as Stacy said, the board, one of their duties is to bring policy forward, right? My assumption is, I haven't researched it, that Alpine School District already has a policy that addresses that. If not, I would suggest that we bring that in so that we're compliant with the law. But I'm in support of the bill, if that's really what you're trying to get at. And what could I do to enforce it while we are the board? There's seven members, and if the majority of the board votes, which I'd be voting for it, I would hope that our administration would follow the law.
And then Stacy, why did you wait to ask LEAs to be compliant? And have you defended the materials that have been found in schools?
Do you want me to answer both of those?
Yeah.
Okay. So the bright line rule already exists. So if any materials violate the bright line rule, they get pulled, there is no process for that. If there is something that does not violate the bright line rule, we do have policy 6160. So a teacher or a parent can bring that forward and say, we believe that this book violates the policy. Each individual school has a committee made up of both staff members and parents. And so then they go through a process and they determine, is this something, they can either retain it, they can remove it, or they can restrict it. And so if it's restricted, parents can come in and say, you know, I don't want my child to read this. We do that. I've not known many parents to do it, but it is an option. And I am supportive of following the process. So we have a lot of processes that we use in our work. And I think the minute that we start to try and jump a process, we get into trouble. So I am supportive of letting individual communities decide when something doesn't violate the bright line rule, if they don't believe it's up to community standards, then they get to determine if that's something that stays in their school.
We'll go to another administrative question. With the Alpine School District's budget at nearly three hun, I mean, sorry, $600 million, what experience do you have managing budgets and revenue streams?
So our budget has been upwards of a billion dollars when we have the different COVID support money coming in. And so that was, that was an interesting process to go through as we determined what things match those funds for the COVID relief. I've been on finance, like I said, for three years, and it's been kind of a fascinating process to go through. We get, I say it's my least favorite meeting of the year when we do our capital budget because we look at how much money we have and the list of needs we have, and it's pretty intense. This year, we've also got with our operations budget, where our needs are always in excess of the money we have. And so I think we have really good conversations between staff and board members, that there are three of us that serve on that committee. Terms are, what are the best plays that we can spend our money that are beneficial to children? And then I've also been on a number of nonprofit boards that don't quite run that big of a deal, but of a budget, but do have different revenue streams, so fairly comfortable in that area.
Well, I started my business in business construction management. And currently, just to give you an example, obviously, Alpine School District is a much larger business, 10,000 employees, 84,000 students, ninety-something schools. But I do run a building business, and budgets are super important. We're doing a $75 million job for Ryan Smith, the owner of the Utah Jazz right now, in Provo. Budget is everything. So I have employees, I have payroll. You know, payroll doesn't come for free. You got to make sure you have money in the bank to pay the payroll on Fridays. In addition to that, we're running a 1,500-unit subdivision in Salem. It's been about a three-year project, 400 unit up in Heber, a couple hundred units in American Fork. So I understand budgeting, I understand personnel and people. And I also believe that this all comes from our tax funds, which I think are sacred. And so I think it's super important to make sure that we make those dollars stretch as well as possible.
What are your views on preserving the preeminent role of parents? Let's start with you, Brian.
I think parents should make decisions for the school, you know, as far as related to their kids. Like I said, I'm a parent like Stacy. I have children in the school district, and I think it's super important that parents have a choice in how the schools are ran. I think that's why there's the local school board, right? So anyway.
Parents are their child's best advocate. I have five children, and each one of them have a very different set of needs and personalities. And so I think we very much look forward to the ways and appreciate the ways that we engage with parents. We have opportunities for parents to be on the school community council. So that's managing the land trust money that comes from the state for each individual school. They also have opportunities in PTA and other volunteering avenues. And so I know we're better when we have parents in school because they can see what's going on. They know their kids and their community. And it's a relationship that we appreciate and that we, I think we spend a lot of time talking with our parents and understanding their perspective and the challenges for their students. And I think it's part of what makes us strong together.
How would you support all students?
So I have tried for years to make sure that the decisions I make, whether the student is in one geographic area or another, or whatever their needs are, that we are making sure that we are putting our focus and our resources to help them. So some of the things that we've done the last couple of years, we've switched the way that we determine how many administrators or support service, counselors, social workers, psychologists are in schools. So we've added some money in that area so a principal can say, hey, we, you know, we brought the ratio down to add another assistant principal. They can determine where those numbers go. We also put more money into, we call them FTEs. That's just the number of full-time employees so that as principals are kind of building their schedules, that they're making sure that they are putting money in the places that students need it the most so that each location has a little more direct impact on that. And I think we just keep putting money where it needs to be. So hopefully, we reach all kids. I know that we don't get everybody to the best ability, but we do our very best with what we have.
I've only been involved in Alpine School District for a few months, to be honest. And so I've watched Stacy, I've watched the board members. And I think Stacy and the board members have done a wonderful job in doing exactly what she says. And I think she means it and does it. And so if I were elected, I would try to continue that same path. A lot of times in the school district is you got majority rule, right? And so with majority, that often leaves out a minority. And so it would be my goal also to make sure that all children are looked after. And I think Stacy's done a great job with that in many aspects, you know, with the seven different special education programs the school has and many other terms that she's using that I don't even quite know what they mean. But I do believe that she and the other board members do do their best, and I would try to continue that same thing.
Love this question. As I today opted my child out of all testing, I've forgotten to. This year, the school called me, they're like, we're doing testing, and your child isn't opt-out, and you always opt them out. How will you protect children from data mining as well as psychological surveys?
Don't even know what that stuff is. I will, I'm naming a list right now, data mining and psychological surveys. I will look to my wife to protect my own kids on that stuff. I don't even know what that stuff is. So I'm going to waste your time if I give you an answer, but I'm happy to listen to Stacy's response on that one.
Data privacy is huge. And we have, we literally have people who are assigned to making sure those things are protected. And if there is a breach, that we let people know. I very much support parents' right to decide if they want their child to be tested in any way. So whether that's an Acnean's test for literacy, or we're looking at math, or it's more of a social-emotional test, absolutely. If a parent doesn't want their child to be engaged in that, then they can absolutely opt them out, and that is their choice to make. And I think on our end, on the tech side, we just work really hard to make sure that the people and the companies that we're working with understand our expectations. So we're in compliance with both the law and parent expectations.
Actually, I have a follow-up question for that. There was a bill that recently passed the legislature that will be going into effect that talks about collecting more data than is necessary from any government entity, a school district would be one of those, and also retaining data past its necessary date. What will you do to ensure that schools aren't collecting data that isn't necessary and that they don't retain that data? Because those create potential breach issues.
So one of the things that's been new to our district is with admins, our leadership team does moments that matter. And so that's one of the avenues in which they would go over something like this to just, hey, be aware, we want to make sure that we're following these processes. There are a couple of different ways we send things out to school. There is always a written way, it's usually talked about in a meeting, and then there's follow-up reminders. And so I think that we are really clear on our end in terms of what the expectations are. If somebody brings forth a concern, then we do an audit just to make sure everything is in its right place. And so I think we're all very invested in protecting privacy and only keeping information as long as we need it.
And I agree with everything Stacy said. And I honestly don't know much about it, but I will research it.
Where do you stand on safeguarding religious freedom and conscience in the classroom?
So, let me see the question again, how will I?
Or where do you stand on preserving? Or where do you stand on, on preserving right of the religious freedom and conscience in the classroom?
Yeah, so I think there should be religious freedom and I don't have an issue with it. Do you want to like be more detailed than that?
That's all it says, is where do you stand on safeguarding religious freedoms and conscience?
I think it's awesome to have the pledge of allegiance at school. And I think students should be able to practice religion how they feel. I would believe there should be a place for those that don't believe in religion and people that do believe in religion, no matter what the religion is. So to me, I think school should be separate from religion, you know, I think they're two different things. But I don't think, you know, somebody should be categorized because they have religious views in a negative way.
My daddy was a Marine. So I grew up from the time I was a small girl, understanding how important an individual's religion and personal it is to them. I think that we need to be very conscious of what any group of students, whatever their faith may be. Some right now are in a season where they are fasting. And so that impacts your ability to be in a classroom and learning if you were not eating for a large span of time. Sometimes that means that they leave early to be able to get to a religious service for whatever holiday may be there. So I think we just do our very best to make sure that we are accommodating their needs and we're aware of those things that are most important to them. And I would protect that very much so.
At least one ASD school board member has said, the basics no longer cut it in today's society and that we need a lot more programs for today's students. Could you please state your comments on that?
I think that might have been me who said that. So you could have just said, you said once. And, and really what I was saying with that is we, we get some feedback sometimes that people aren't supportive of the social, social emotional aspect in school and that we just need to do math and reading. And really, our goal here is that we're preparing students so that when they exit K-12, that they have the skills necessary that they need to go out and thrive in the world. You've got to have technology in there, you have to have a good understanding of history. We like to get the arts side to round people out because we want well, well-rounded students. So those core classes obviously are essential to anything, but we do ourselves a disservice when we don't talk about all the other skills and the attributes that students need so that they can go out and be good members of society.
So I didn't do well in math and reading, and I love the humanities and geography. I seem to get better grades than most. But anyway, no, I believe the basics are important, but I also believe well-rounded in other classes are also important. I don't even know what the controversy is there. I thought we all take, you know, six or seven different types of classes, whether it's music, PE, math, reading, science. I hope that's still what's going on in the district. And I think they're all super important to me.
I've heard some people say that the electives is what got them through school, right? They didn't like, maybe they weren't good at math. Math was my thing, but I didn't like the other things, so. Do you support the current Alpine School District display policy? And along with that, do you support the display policy allowing pride flags in classrooms?
Again, I think I've said this before, if not, I told myself this a million times, so I figured the question would come up. To me, anything that's controversial takes attention away from, I think our most important thing is to teach the kids. And so if you allow a certain flag in a classroom, no matter what the flag is, you know, whether it's, you know, I support police officers, or I support firemen, or whatever it is, I think if, if something like that's gonna draw contention within the school, I think it's bad for the school. So I believe that we should support a flag of our United States. I think we should support the flag of our state of Utah. And then whatever school it is, whether it's a high school, a middle school, or whatever. But at the same time, it's not because I think anything less of a certain group of people. You know, I honestly think all kids should be treated the same. And, but I also believe that if it's gonna cause divisiveness, I, I think it's harmful to the learning environment.
So one of the coolest things about flags in our classroom is it's a way for our teachers to connect with their students. So I know one of our teachers is a very big Celtics fan. I'm a Lakers girl, I don't understand it, but I appreciate the love and the passion for our sport. So right away, kids walk in and they're able to connect with her, whether it's because they are basketball fans or they're Boston's fan. And I know around here, we have some pretty intense rivalries about our local universities and, and where people put their fan base there. And I think it's just a great chance for kids to learn more about their teachers, for them to see themselves represented in things. And I think we need to be careful because the minute we start to pull down anything, then we're just gonna have some really blank, empty walls. And if a kid can walk in and see something and feel connected to someone, I think that's a fantastic thing.
Why did you want to change the display policy?
Did you support to change the display policy to allow pride flags in classrooms?
So there was nothing that specifically prohibited it until the bill came along. And I personally don't think a pride flag is political. And so we have some students who very much, they see that flag and they know they are in a space where they are supported. And so I don't believe that it's a political thing.
Please share your vision on the role of parents in education.
I love any opportunities that we get to work with parents, right? So sometimes there are parents that wanna talk and have a conversation about something that is affecting their child. Spent a lot of time, I'm with them last week, with some parents at Lehigh High School who are concerned because of some programs that are being cut. And so for me, it is a temperature check of knowing where is the community, where are their thoughts, what are things that are important to them? And so I hope that we always continue, we have a variety of ways that parents can collaborate with us. So whether that's being on their school SEC, or being part of PTA, or they're choosing to submit like a written public comment or come, and gives a comment at board meeting. And then we always have the opportunity to follow up with them later. So people submit an online comment and they're in my area and make sure that I circle up. Do they get all of their concerns resolved? Was there, I love when we get feedback. I think that's the way that we get better when parents say, hey, I noticed you're doing this. Here are some things that I think may be helpful. I think that definitely helps us do our job better.
It's my view that parents should be deeply involved in school. For instance, my wife's not here tonight, it's not because we're in a fight. It's because she's actually, Skyridge High School has a trip going to Washington DC in a little bit. And she's on some committee and they're having that meeting tonight. But anyway, and likewise myself, I, you know, try to participate in many ways that I can, whether it's through fundraising or, you know, just volunteering wherever it's needed. But I think that's what makes our community so strong. And I think Alpine School District does, at least in areas where I've seen, does a wonderful job with that. I think there's a lot of engagement by the parents and I think that's what makes Alpine School District as strong as it is today.
How would you work with the local cities and communities to support students and children?
Well, I'd like to get to know them. I, I think that local cities play a vital role. You know, a lot of times, one thing that just comes off my mind is that, you know, maybe says with sports. I think there's a lot of city-owned land that's used for, you know, schools. But I, in my job right now, I, I run a planning and development business also. And we spend a lot of time with a lot of cities. We spend times with, you know, American Fork, Springville, Provo, Salem. Haven't spent any with Lehigh, other than when we build our own home there. But I, I feel like I have the skills to meet with city councilmen, different city officials and can use whatever, you know, value I have to bring resources together. Maybe there's things we can share with the city and also the city with us.
So I have to say, we enjoy a really fantastic relationship with Lehigh City, with our council members, with our mayors. I'm in regular conversation with most of them. And by regular, sometimes that means daily, sometimes it's weekly. But we're really good about communicating, hey, this is coming up on our end. What does it look like on your end? Hey, by the way, these are the developments we're improving. Couple of ideas that I think illustrate what a great place Lehigh is. I'll touch on AF in a minute. When Viewpoint opened, so I don't know if any of you are in that area, but the traffic situation was not ideal. And we kind of knew going into it, but the way the process goes, has to open, you have to have cars before you do something. And so I made a call on the first day of school, hey Luke, we need some help. And they sure did come right up. And by the next morning, they had a way that we were gonna change the traffic flow. So it was a little bit longer to ride, but it made it very clean and people were safe, which is our priority. And then the second thing I was gonna say, Lehigh Police Department, in the last year, they've created Communities That Care Coalition. And so we, several Alpine people have come on in kind of an advisory role to say, you know, here are the areas we're focused on. You know, what else are you doing to make sure that we are not duplicating resources and that we're able to get a larger group of people? And so it's not something that I take lightly because I do appreciate the time that the city council members and the mayor and their staff put in to make sure that we are all on the same page and that we're being as proactive as we can. And then American Fork Mayor Frost is fantastic.
What do you see as the most important way to decrease suicidal thoughts and improve mental health? One minute, go.
You think you know what you're getting into in a job and then you find out very quickly that you don't. And we have lost too many students. We try really hard to make sure that people know what resources are available, who they can reach out to. We've got posters going, a couple of years ago, I, on the Suicide Prevention Coalition, I approached my group with an idea about a magnet, hey, can we send it out to every household in our boundaries? Because this touches everybody. And several people have come forward since then to say, because I have this on my fridge, I knew the number to call, or I knew I could call nine-one-one. And so I think it's just an education piece. And as we work with different members of our coalition, we try to get the information out in any avenue we can. We're looking at doing some additional things in more public spaces so that in areas we know are kind of high traffic for that, just so people know that there are options and that they have alternatives. Because I will tell you, it is the most scudding part of this job when we lose students. And we want them to live. So I think we just continue doing what we're doing, educating people, offering resources when we can.
That's a super sad thing. We were in Mesquite, I think like two centers ago, maybe three centers ago. And my son was down there for a seven-v-seven tournament. And there was a bunch of kids from the Skyridge High School on the team. And I think something happened at Skyridge, maybe related to this. I don't wanna, I'm pretty sure that happened. And I could see that, I could see a change in my boy and his friend's countenance. I mean, I could physically see a difference in them feeling sad. And so I can't imagine being the parent or people that know that individual. So I don't, I don't know how to stop that stuff. But I do believe that whatever the school district can do as far as training to maybe parent, add teachers, teachers are super close to these individuals, probably see them as much as maybe sometimes as their parents, train to the students, and certainly like to dive into that and figure out what that's being done. But just they need a safe place, you know? People need to be able to recognize maybe some of the signs and gotta figure out how to cut it back more.
These next questions are gonna be yes or no. So I just want, I'm gonna ask a question and I just want each of you to say yes or no. Do you support teaching critical race theory?
Me first?
Yep.
No.
No, but we should get a clarifying.
The next one?
Ten seconds.
Yeah, it's more time.
Do you support diversity, equity, and inclusion programs?
I support ensuring that all students are successful.
You want a yes or no?
Yeah.
So I would say, so answer the question again?
Do you support diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, DEI programs?
No, not the program.
Do you believe in teaching gender ideology?
No.
Do you believe the NEA is a positive force on education?
What did Stacy say to the last one?
She said no.
Yes.
Do you believe the NEA is a positive force on education?
That's the National Education Association, so the union?
Yeah.
So I think there's good things with the union, yes.
One more, sorry, it was texted to me, so I gotta pull it out in a second. Someone didn't get their stuff in on time, so they texted it to me. Well, I, that was kind of answered, it was about bombs. And you guys kind of answered about bombs. So I'll ask this.
Was it about the Lisa New Bond or Geo Bond?
The Geo Bond. So this is a, a different one. This is Alpine School District is the largest district in the state with over six thousand employees. What executive and administrative experience qualifies you to serve on the executive board of such a large organization? This is not a yes or no, obviously, but.
I've, I've never ran an organization that the advantage to being on a board is there's seven individuals. And I believe with seven people, seven of mine are super smarter than one. But I have ran a company of two-hundred-and-fifty employees, you know, as nothing, it's a drop in the bucket compared to six thousand. But really what it comes down to is we're choosing the superintendent, like Stacy said in one of the first questions. And I think Shane Farnsworth does a marvelous job and he's the administrator. So I look to him as being the person that oversees a lot of it.
So we're actually over nine thousand, we're closer to almost ten thousand employees.
I think I was probably looking at FTEs now, part type, so yeah.
Okay, so we're the second largest employer in Utah County. So we are very invested in our people. And I have spent the last almost four years learning everything I can, taking everything that I brought prior to coming to this role. And again, I do think we need to be clear in what the role of the board is and what the role of the superintendent is. So the board hires the superintendent, the VA, and then every two years, you know, well, every year we do a, um, thank you, evaluation. And then every two years, their contracts come up for renewal. And so if the superintendent is, we are all going the same direction and we're meeting goals and that's great. And if the board chooses to go another direction, then they have that option as well.
Okay, we have five minutes left, so we're gonna have two more questions in the. Next one's only thirty seconds and then we'll do your closing statement. So that's the second question. So the next one is, why did you run the school board or why are you running this time? Thirty seconds.
So I've spent my whole life in public education and I've seen a lot of things. And I served in PTA at the district level where I worked with everybody across the board. And I saw the great things that were happening and I saw some areas that I thought there could be improvement. And I am lucky enough to have kind of some, the luxury of time in my life. And I have the time to put into this job and to be in our schools and to bring things forward that I see. And so I just really wanted to make a positive difference, try to fill in some of the areas that we needed to be improved on and feel lucky to get to the job.
So a little bit likewise, I haven't been involved in public education at all in my life, but I've had family that is. And I've always been taught as, within my family being raised, is that it's good to give back to your community. And I felt like this is a great way, an opportunity for me. I do have also a lot of available time and I would like to give back to my community. My, my grandpa, Bob, was a Lincoln Junior High principal. My uncle Stephen Bob was the Alpine School District superintendent for many, many years. My mom was a school teacher, my two sisters, some of you may know Kimberly Bird, that's my sister. She's works in the district. Before that, she was also a school teacher and such. My other sister's down in Washington County. So school, education is super important to me. And I wanted to run because I also believe that fifty percent of our student population is young men. And I think it would be important to have a young man's voice on the board.
All right, and then closing statements. So you would, do either of you care who goes first? I mean, you went first, so it's, if we start with you and end with you, that's maybe a bit of an unfair ban. Why don't you go first on this closing statement?
Happy to do so.
Two minutes, right?
Yeah, two minutes for the closing statement.
All right. I love my job. It is a super hard job and it's probably one of the most challenging things I've done in terms of representing a very large group of people that all have very differing thoughts and points of view and needs. I, I see the work that we've done and the progress that we've made and I think there's more work to do. I think in terms of the upcoming reconfiguration, that it's not an if, it's a when. And I have invested a lot of time in my life into students, into employees. And I would very much like the opportunity to. And I would very much like the opportunity to get us through this transition process and to make sure that if that is indeed what the voters want, that we are taking care of everybody. Teachers have a lot of angst about what's going on. We have a lot of students with different needs. We have our special needs students who need better facilities and more resources than they have right now. And so I would very much like the opportunity to continue that work, to improve on what we have, and so that we can meet everybody's needs.
And I would just ask for each of your guys' vote, or I guess it's really your delegates. And I don't, I guess delegates don't really vote.
No, they vote at convention.
They vote at convention.
But not yet.
So I ask for your vote. I'm not as experienced as Stacy as far as in the day-to-day as the school board, probably like she was when she was first made also. But I can promise you this, that I will put the time in. I like to study. I, I'm a, a quick learner, but I also know that there's a lot to learn. I think I'm a great planner. I think I'm a great visionary. I think I'm a positive person. I think that I am a, a person that knows how to handle issues civilly and be able to reach out to all parties. You know, in law, you got, a lot of times it's all about negotiation and hearing everybody's input. So I, I want you to know that I am one that will listen to the community and I will take those back to heart and listen. I want you to know that I care about kids, care about their education, think it's important. And at the same time, to know that there's some people in our community that don't have kids in school anymore. Maybe they're on a fixed budget. And so taxes me a lot too. And so sometimes we need to figure out how to make a dollar stretch more, maybe not spend a dollar. I also have family that's educators. And so I think it's super important to make sure that we have money to pay teachers, to recruit and retain the best. And so I think there's a balance in all those things. And I also want you to know that, you know, sometimes opponents, you know, it gets contentious, maybe, or whatever. But I want you to know, I, I appreciate Stacy and all the time that she's spent. And, and the time that she will spend in the future, if, if she gets re-elected and that I'm here as a support, if you need me in the future, if I don't get elected. Because I look at, I've only been to a few board meetings and I sit there for the hours and I'm like, wow, that really takes a lot of time. But not only that, I think she spends hours outside of those time that you just see him also. And so I just want to thank you for the time you just spent, sincerely. I think it's awesome that I see maybe Julie's here too. And, you know, there's a lot of time spent with the board. I don't, I don't know why many people really want to do something, but I, but I, I want to do it because I think I have the time and I think I could be good and, and help. And I don't know that I'd do it better, but I do think I might have a, you know, some perspectives that may help.
We want to thank both of our candidates and thank you. Running for office is never easy. Putting your name out there is never easy. And thank you for the time and effort you're putting into this. And thank you delegates for coming and putting in the time and the effort vetting the candidates so that we can pick a, a nominee for the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.